And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the religion of our religious hands, one nation, one ground, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. As the Commission reviewed the agenda, if they have, had entertained a motion to accept.
I moved that we approved the agenda as recorded.
All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay, all in favor. No, approval of the minutes, no, I wasn't here last time, so I'm gonna turn it over to you people to read over the minutes and see what you think.
I went here early and I read them over and I couldn't see anything that needed it.
So are you making a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah.
Lynn seconds it. All in favor of approving the minutes from August fifteenth, say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. There ain't no nays, all in favor. Jordan, anything with the Board of Adjustment?
Yeah, we had one petition that has been tabled several times for Raymond and Lydia Yoder to build a dwelling on prime soils and that was approved today.
Anything else?
That was it.
Okay, thank you. Marcia's not here and I don't see anybody representing the county board. Is there anybody? Okay, Eric.
The county board, they did approve the Hemp Hill cellular communication tower. I think there was a closed session and they met because they wanted to, I think, see resolution to the litigation with the first site that was ultimately denied. And I believe they put that to rest. The second conditionally used permit was David Nuru and they approved that request. So those are the two that we had.
Thank you, Eric. Our next thing is a draft of the dog kennel interim zoning ordinance. And how do you want to handle this? Do you want to give an update? Okay, go ahead and then we'll let the Commission ask you questions.
Thank you. I'm Doug Cislak. I'm the Director of Planning and Environmental Services. And tonight, our only goal here is to just introduce this ordinance for the dog kennel interim ordinance. And so is there a, we have a slide, I think, that talks about the process. Oh, and it's at your desk. Yep. Anybody online? So today is, as I mentioned, we're just introducing this. This predates me, of course, and so you're fully aware of the issues, although there's somebody in your group that is not familiar with.
Dean's not here.
Oh, and he's not here. Well, there you go. But we did provide you a summary of all the slides that we had back in, in, it looks like a March meeting for the Planning Commission in 2023. So the board through, and I didn't bring that up here, but the, through action that they took, they wanted us to explore an ordinance to prohibit the use of dog kennels in the county. And they also had a motion that asked us to further explore licensing the existing facilities as well. So this ordinance before you today is just the beginning of that process. So it's an opportunity for you to, at this meeting, and then you'll hold a public hearing at your next meeting. And then provide comment back to county board. This would be the earliest that we could, the schedule that's before you, would be the earliest we could get that done.
Any questions? Any comments from the Commission?
Has there been, has there been any problems with any permits, violations, or problems with anybody that's licensed into dogs that you know of? Or permits, no affidavits, no sheriff's complaints, or anything of that?
No, my, I started here at the end of May and since then, at least I can tell you there hasn't been any.
And it hasn't been researched, anything before that, to bring to this body that the reason why we have to?
I'm not sure exactly it's the totality of the information that's been shared with you, but I know that staff and, and, you know, the information that was shared in that presentation, it's my understanding that that represents, you know.
What I'm getting is, what is broken in the old system that has to be replaced with this new system?
If I could just summarize the concerns that some of the other commissioners have had is that their concern, I think their overall concern is that the state and the feds who also regulate this issue aren't able to be transparent about that. And, and, and there's a concern that, that it needs to be further regulated.
Eugene.
Well, if they aren't transparent about that, under this ordinance, what's going to make them more transparent on a new ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I meant, I confused you. So the state and the federal government also regulate dog kennels and their processes aren't necessarily transparent to the public. And because of that, there's concern amongst leadership that, that we need to further regulate.
So are you suggesting that their work is not public information?
I believe that's true. Some of it is not available to the public.
Like what?
That I'd have to defer to staff who know a little bit more about that.
Because for those of us that have state license and everything, you can find out tomorrow that Dr. Flynn has a license with the Board of Dentistry. And you can find out anything that went before me during my forty-four years being a licensed dentist.
Right. I believe that.
Why is I not transparent?
I, I don't know. There are, there are just some records that aren't, that aren't shared.
And it makes it hard for this group when we hear there's secrets out there to find out where we stand on this. Because a year and a half ago, most of us on this board had public hearings, we did the, the dog thing. We, the board, not unanimously, but majority in favor recommended no change. And then it went back to the board, county board, and they didn't seem to like what we came up with. But from the evidence that I saw, I did not see them egregiously breaking the law.
Right. And to my knowledge, there hasn't been any new, there hasn't been any new information added.
I have one question here and I'll throw it right out. Four times in this proposal, it states, "In order to protect the planning process and the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens of the county." What is that? Do the dogs have rabies or something? What do you, it doesn't say protect the dogs, it says protect the citizens.
Right.
What is that? What do I not know?
That's standard language when, whenever we're passing any ordinance, that there's some health, safety, and public welfare.
What I'm saying, does it pertain to our concerns here? The welfare of the dogs? Because that seems to be the problem, right?
That's right.
I believe it's stated that the dogs have to be vaccinated every two years for rabies.
Well, all of that, based on our research a year and a half ago, we had testimony from the veterinaries, the USDA, and the Board of Health for Minnesota on this issue. And my point is, are we making it up or are we creating this for fear? Because I don't see where these conditional use permits are a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of this county. So tell me what I'm missing.
I guess you'd have to really know the record a little bit more, but I think that there's some concern.
I did.
I think there's some concern about the welfare of the dogs. And.
But this is citizens, not dogs.
Right.
This goes to the citizens. Now, I want to know what incident came up with the dogs, and I'll get to you, John. Because in the post, there was some situation that supposedly tracked back to these facilities. But doing a little research myself, I know there's ninety million dogs in America, USA. If that ratio is true, that's one in four. If our county has forty-eight to fifty-two thousand people in it, we have twelve thousand dogs in this county. What percent of those dogs are part of these conditional use permits? Ten, five? Can you answer that?
I, I can. At the moment, I can't. You know, we have, our goal is to provide you guys with the, the information that you need to deliberate on this.
But you're not. That's my whole point.
Okay.
I'm not getting the information.
Right, so if you.
You're not telling me the nitty gritty that's causing this problem.
Yeah.
I'm being blunt now, but I'm frustrated.
Right.
What is the problem?
So the, the reason why we're before you today and the reason why is, is this is the, we only have one process for amending our ordinance and this is the process that we have. I understand that you guys have talked about this before.
And we had public hearings on this.
Right, but you didn't have a, a public hearing on.
Interim one.
This one.
One that's proposed.
That's right.
And I feel that's just because they didn't hear what they wanted on our first one.
And I, I don't know what to say about that.
In fact, I wish I had a little minutes in this packet of all the time we spent on this ordinance with us today, because we really were thorough. And I believe our planning commission went and visited every site to check and see their status. And we didn't hear a lot of problems coming back. I recall two paper issues, not health issues, not rabid dogs, something that would cause the health and safety and welfare of our citizens to be compromised. Nothing in there to go to the point that we need an emergency, emergency as it says, to do this new regulation. Emergencies, to me, excuse me, but I, I see that as there's definite threat. We need to make immediate decisions because of an imminent problem. I'm not seeing it.
Right. If I could just speak to the emergency part, Attorney Kranz gave a presentation to the county board on that. It's, it has a bit broader definition in the context of ordinances and such that the word is used for any condition where the, where the deliberative body doesn't have the information it needs to make, to render an opinion, a decision. And so that, that represents, that's the definition of an emergency and if I could put quotes around that.
So just to prove another point, we're talking about emergencies, health and welfare stuff. I'm going to tell you, personally, I'm not a big cannabis fan. Why can't you apply every bit of this to that ordinance? Now, I'm not saying I'm going to vote against the cannabis, I'm going to look at it, I'm going to follow the law and what's been recommended. But if I personally don't like something, I'm not dragging that into this room. Why are we getting dragged into this?
Well, and again, I apologize for that. This is just the only process that we have. So it has to come before the Planning Commission, which is the deliberative body when it comes to us adopting ordinances. You're, you're supposed to give your opinion on it, on this ordinance, and we'll take that to county board and the county board will act on it.
I guess my opinion is, is we all heard the previous one, we submitted it to the county board. And I understand why this is back. If they don't like our opinion, they can go above and beyond this and they don't need our opinion. They can pass it themselves.
Right. And so I, you all have to, again, pardon me, but I, this is the only process we have for amending our ordinance and this is what.
All right. I'm just speaking how I feel.
That's okay.
I've been around a while.
I can take it. I'm just telling you that.
And you're just helping me, the person in front of the podium.
That's right.
You can pick anybody you want, you know I'm not going to hold back.
That's right. And, and, and I'm just telling you that this is the process that we have. And it's kind of in that spelled out right there on the, you know, those are the steps. So when we, just like the, the other ordinance you're going to hear about today, that's the same, we follow the same steps for that as well.
But is this legitimate to apply it to this process? I am not, I am concerned this interim ordinance is not legitimate to our ordinances in general, to how we've governed, to how we've listened, to our conditional uses, we granted things. We know out of thirteen and somewhere on this, it says we granted thirteen conditional use permits for dog breeding facilities, kennels, whatever you want to call them. Well, they're not kennels. Kennels is something that you take your dog to and they take care of it for the weekend. These are legitimate businesses that are trying and have for a long time, trying to run their business. And I know they could continue, but we're trying to limit from here forward where we go. Now, of those thirteen, there's only ten active. Am I wrong? It's about ten currently. I thought I read that in the literature. So this is not exponentially growing. I would say we, we did a transfer of one to another family. And I recall, can't give you a definite time, but we did issue a permit to somebody else a few years ago.
One over South Utica.
But we're not, they're not beating the door down here to do this stuff. So I'm frustrated that we're taking this out of context because some people are concerned about the general welfare, welfare of the dogs. And I think everybody here is too. But with that said, I said, I'm estimating there's twelve thousand dogs in this county. Of that twelve thousand, and maybe our staff can help me, is there even a thousand associated with all ten of these breeding facilities?
That's a good question, one that we.
Well, we have, we have the number on every permit, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
Adult dogs. I've thought, I read, every one of them has a limit, at least as far as I'm aware. Now, with that said, now I'm talking adult dogs are under permit. I don't know about puppies and this and that.
Right.
But are we talking five percent of the dogs in the county?
That I don't know. You know, breeding dogs, you could have, I don't know how many they could actually end up breeding. I don't know what the actual number.
Well, every permit is, there isn't a universal number. We grant that. But I also worry about the backyard dog facilities. Most of our dogs, puppies are probably coming from backyards, right? I don't hear any of that addressed here. Are we concerned about the other nine thousand dogs, or twelve, or whatever it is? It doesn't seem to. And my point of this is, I'm leading you down, are we targeting a population here?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, I would be concerned. I'm going to put us right now to say, I could see where most of the majority could feel targeted by this. You might not be aware, but I'm just throwing it on the table because that's what we're here for, to ask questions, right? Because you'd rather have it from us than somewhere down the road, right?
Yep, fire away.
I'm holding back, huh, you think? I'm going to turn it back to the Commission because you heard enough from me. But I think I, I speak of how I feel. I only represent myself. There's five other commissioners here.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, you can.
I know this is before your time, Doug, but I'm just kind of curious about the logistics. I thought it was pretty informative on page ten, letter G, saying Board of Animal Health, USDA statutory restrictions, they, county lax, and the absence of inspection reports. I remember when Olivia presented, I don't think it was eighteen months ago, or recently, where we visited all the kennels. And there was some comment about they have different levels of compliance guidelines. And I thought that the Fed was really low compared to the state or something and that that was, that was a concern back then. And for welfare of the public, I'm, I'm assuming smells, sounds, lights, I remember those complaints by some of the, the pro-dog people that were in the audience when we did the last presentation of what we found in our county. But the moratorium is basically saying they're out of business, correct? Because even the existing kennels, they can't increase their numbers, so they can't breed.
Oh, no, they could continue. They're going to be able to continue to operate.
Posing a moratorium on the establishment of new kennels or expansion of existing kennels, so they can continue to breed.
Operate under the.
Increase the number of dogs.
Operate under the current permits.
Thank you.
You said he could.
John wanted to speak earlier.
He said it all, Mike. For the time being, he said it all.
Go ahead. One thing to add to this, these people are in this business of breeding dogs to make money. It's a business. And when you do that, I've been involved in livestock for years, the dog business is not any different. You want to keep them healthy and alive so you have a decent product to sell. It's just that simple. If you don't have a live dog, you don't have a healthy dog, you're not going to have a business. The incentive for them is to maintain a decent business, what it is. But I feel what's going on with this dog kennel stuff, the next step is going to go to animal husbandry, to our livestock, of our hogs, our cattle, our chickens, and our turkeys in our own county.
I, I did.
Because we have an assorted group of people that think that food doesn't come from the earth, it just comes from the grocery store.
Yeah, I.
That's what we're heading. And you better, being in the position you are, you better watch out where that is. And everybody else in this room, you better remember where the hell your food comes from because there's countries in there that have tried the system that these people are ending and people stand in line and people have starved.
I did hear a, a concern about that too, that this would expand into other areas. And so in this, you'll notice on page eleven of the agenda packet, the definition of a dog included domesticated animal as to try to draw a difference between that and.
Yeah, I, I understand what you said there in the dog, but it doesn't take too much more to go from a dog is a mammal, that a cow is a mammal, sheep is a mammal, a goat is a mammal, too. And we got some of the same people don't want us to use weed killer out on our crops. Well, I'd let the people ban it and see what they get for crops without weed killer. We're, we're in this whole same mantra, but I, I'm done. Thanks, Louis. I'll go back to the dog kennel and I wanted to point out what Lynn pointed out. Actually, if you don't ship your dogs out of state, all you need is your Board of Health from the state. If you ship them out of state though, you do need the USDA license and conformance. So that is more restrictive. Because they can't ship any of the dogs, like somebody mentioned, vaccinations, they've got to have that all in order. And before they ship, they have to have a veterinarian sign off, okay? And it's my understanding that all of our conditional use permits have what they call an onsite or a, a recognized veterinarian that oversees that area. And that's common and they don't have to be local, they could be somewhere. But in our, Louis and I, our cattle, we have to have a veterinarian also onsite that they can only prescribe antibiotics and different things. So it's not just in the dog industry, we have to conform with these rules. And a different application, no? So it gets back to how much regulation is enough? The dogs, breeding, commercial dog kennels happen to be the most regulated animal in this county. Everybody hear that? It's the most regulated animal in this county right now. And we want to add more to it. And I know some people didn't like what they hear maybe from the, from the Board of Animal Health or the USDA. But it doesn't mean they're not doing their job. If transparency, they, like us, have some limits on what they can throw out into the public. And I don't know what they are, so I'm not going to address them. So if that means transparency, you need to work with them and don't lock them in a area they can't go down, just like we can't go into areas of employment and different things. It's just off, not possible. So again, going back, I don't know how or what, or what does it, what do you want to train the staff to go out and regulate this industry? Is it pet friendly? Is it, you know, we already got quite a few people there. And I'd like a list from the planning staff, exactly what do you plan to train to do? And where are you going to get that training? Who's going to train you? Because I don't know of any educational program out there now that does what we're suggesting here. Do you have any idea who would do that?
I don't, sir.
So we have a lot of variables here.
We do.
And in my opinion, this is very premature.
Yeah, I, the only thing I could say is that this topic has been in, before this body before and it's been at the county board and we've been directed to bring it to this point where we're at.
That's what we're here for, too.
That's right. So we'll take your comments and you, you just came with some of them, so we'll, those are some of the things that we'll be putting together. All we're trying to do with the, with the processes we've identified here is put the moratorium in place.
Eugene, you have one more comment and then I'd like to, if it's okay, move on to the next subject.
I have.
Okay, and John is back too.
All right. I'm maybe even older than Mike. And so I was on this planning commission personally when we did the frac sand debacle. And we spent three years on that and the planning commission came to a reasonable consensus, forwarded to the county commissioners who put their moratorium on frac sand mining in place, even though the business representatives of the frac sand industry told us right out at both hearings that there was not enough volume of frac sand in Winona County to make it commercially viable or what, go any further. And so by the time we got done twiddling our thumbs and having meetings, the frac sand industry in this area completely collapsed. And I think that this is another case of the same thing, only in a different area. You know, it was mentioned that these kennels weren't doing a good job. And when, when we had our last go around with this, I went to one of these kennels and the wife of the owner of the kennel told me that she said, you know, my house isn't as clean as this kennel. And I haven't seen any Amish houses, although I didn't go into her house, that are really not very sanitary and clean. So, and I couldn't see any evidence that she was not telling me the truth. And the other point I have is, we did deny one kennel and that's a neighbor of mine. And I followed that very closely because he wanted to breed dogs that he was selling puppies for, for five thousand dollars apiece. And so when we denied him a kennel permit, he didn't stop. But then the market dropped out, went to zero, so he's not raising dogs anymore. So we solved our problem without going to all this trouble. And another thing I'm going to make at this time is, I've always had the feeling that the staff of Winona County Planning and Zoning is not lacking for work. So what in the world are we trying to come up with another regulation to give them some more work to do because they're not getting what they're supposed to do now, Don? Thank you very much.
John, you had some comments.
My understanding is that the remit of the planning commission is to make judgments on land use issues. So, you know, if, if a kennel is a reasonable land use reason, then that really is about the limit of what we're supposed to be making judgments on. You know, the. You know, regulation, and obviously, there are other regulating bodies, and, and the, but I think this, that this, actually, I'm wondering why it's, I'm not wondering why it's here. I know why it's come before us. It's because one or more of the county board people, county board commissioners are under pressure from their constituents regarding animal rights issues, especially dogs. And, and so, they decided to send it over here so that we could maybe give them cover for doing something that they shouldn't be doing.
If I could just stop you right there. Again, I, I wouldn't bring this before you if I didn't feel I needed to. We don't have another process for amending our ordinance. The Plan Commission is the deliberative body that has to consider these things and and hold hearings, so I, I would have to have a change to our, our overall ordinance in order to exclude the Plan Commission from this.
My other, my other point was looking at these items here, G and I, GH and I, it's, they're obviously a pretext for putting this back into play again. It's kind of insulting that they, that they think that we don't see right through it. Because we already dealt with this a year and a half ago, and, and suddenly they came up with a, a pretext that, oh, we don't have enough information, we can't get it fast enough for the people that are really responsible for regulating these. So we'll put some regulation in underneath this excuse that we're going to float back through the Planning Commission. Yeah, to me, it, once again, I think that there's a degree of cover for the county board that's being, the Planning Commission's being used to manipulate, or they're manipulating the Planning Commission in order to gain some cover.
Thank you, John.
Okay, again, I'm not necessarily-
Yeah, we understand.
Yeah, and I have to, again, just-
We're not arguing with you, we're getting a consensus here on how we feel about this.
That's right, and that's-
I'm sorry, but you're important, but I'm not worried about your feelings.
That's okay, it's okay, and mine aren't on trial here, so. But this whole, these whole, all these findings or whatnot, these were, these were things that Attorney Carrance brought before the, the county board, and this is what they're asking you to consider. So it's not that, I'm not seeing that as it's cover for anybody, this is just the findings that were developed.
Thank you, on your phone. Jordan, anything else for him?
Are we, we're being directed to do this, is that correct?
Sorry.
Yeah, any ordinance that comes, that has to do with land use comes before this body.
And we can't refuse to, to move forward with this?
I, I'd have to, Karen, I don't know that you're-
Well, not schedule a public hearing?
Yeah, I don't know, I think, I think the actions that you take here are to advise the county board, but I don't believe that it preempts the county board from taking action on its own. We, we needed to do this process.
Any other comments? Otherwise, we got quite a few pages of some other nice stuff.
How about we move on?
I think so. No, this is a draft, this was discussion, we're not hearing a petition. There's no public hearing, even though they could, they could observe, but this is our hearing. Yeah, Eugene.
Now, if at next month's Planning and Zoning meeting, we have six CUPs that we're supposed to consider, are we supposed to waste time on this before that or after that?
I, I would be up to the chairman, I think, for to, for, he could work with us to establish the agenda.
I think my petitions have a higher priority, is what we'll tell you.
I guess my question is, are, are we, are we needing to make a decision on this before we move on to the next?
No, this is conversation.
Just introduction.
Well, I'm not going to ask for a motion to do anything.
Okay.
This was information. So now we can move on to canvas for more information. Okay. Shoot, we're going to go to the next-
Well, fortunately for me, it'll be Eric will be your, your point. Thank you.
We didn't come up that far, it's tough.
He's got a big head.
When he works for the county board, he don't work for us.
Thank you, John.
One, I guess the consensus, whether willing or not, it sounds like we will have to have the public hearing then on October 17th on that aspect, just for our records.
For the dog thing?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
With six other petitions?
The one thing, I think, when the county board set that, according to our ordinance, we have to set, I think, a public hearing within so many days. So that's why kind of that schedule was put together on that.
Just to look forward or ahead, on the 17th, I'm flying to Quebec in the morning. So I won't be here on the 17th.
I'll be, I'll be in China already for three days.
Wave to you on that. Airport, maybe.
We may not have a cor-?
Yeah, I won't be back till the 22nd of October. I should put it in Louis' hand. I do have a concern about one other member who couldn't make it tonight, his attendance. But guarantee, I can almost guarantee you, three of us will not be here. So it's a question of the other six can make it. I don't, I haven't talked to anybody on it. I just want you to know right up front that I won't be here on the 17th.
Okay, it's noted. All right, I guess, moving on to the next agenda item, I have the dubious honor to introduce this, the cannabis, and to kind of recap where we're at. Now, I put a lot of information together just for reference. And at this point, I guess, just read it over, and if you need to take it home with you, go ahead, but it's kind of a precursor as we get into this. The county board did have their public hearing on September 10th, and it's actually two types of ordinances. It's, at this point, nothing for the zoning ordinance, but they passed interim ordinance on a moratorium of new cannabis businesses. The other was a public use prohibition where it would limit or prohibit the use of cannabis products in public areas. That being said, the county board will make the final, they had their public hearing, they, they will not make a vote until Tuesday, September 24th, at their night meeting to finalize those two documents. What I hope to accomplish tonight is, I guess, show the framework of what we need to do as far as the planning department and the zoning ordinance in our document. And we're on a pretty tight time schedule to accomplish that. Based on what I've seen from the state, they had a preliminary applicant process that closed for social equity, or equity, and they received quite a few applications, 1,800, over half of them were out of state. And according to data that I've seen, there was, I believe, four in the city of Winona, and another three or four, one was in Lewiston, one was St. Charles, one was in Minnesota City, and there might have been one other ones, that was just a preliminary. Now they're going to open it up to everybody else, and they're probably going to receive four or 5,000 more applications. And the, the information that I have in some of these documents are, as a local unit of government, we're able to limit the number of the sites and to reasonably restrict the location and operations of those through like a conditional use permit or interim use permit. Some of the setbacks that are recommended, those are not recommended, but they were put out in the preliminary rules, is that we can allow up to, I believe, 1,000 feet from, let me see here.
School, right?
Yeah, yeah, and I just want to get this for reference.
500 feet from a daycare.
Yep, 1,000 feet from a school, 500 feet from a daycare, 500 feet from a residential facility, 500 feet from an attraction or a public park that's regularly used by minors, and also possibility of X number of feet from another cannabis retail business. So that's really what's in play for us. What we'll have to do, doing the information, there's 13 license types that the state is going to be issuing. There's four of, four of those 13 that are capped. That means they're only going to give so many in the state of Minnesota. The four that are going to be capped are retailer, manufacturer, cultivator, and mezzo businesses. They're going to keep that in place until July 2026, until they know where this all kind of settles as far as final numbers. There's nine license types that are uncapped. At this point, I've seen only just a couple of communities that have moved forward with an ordinance. I believe the city of St. Paul approved their preliminary one Wednesday, and mainly they settled on a 300-foot setback from schools, so they can go any number below that. And then, I think that you have to have a public hearing, especially if we're going to change the ordinance. So that's where we're, we'd be looking for some recommendations of what the thoughts are of the Planning Commission, so we, so staff can take some examples and write some proposed amendments that would be inserted in the zoning ordinance. I looked at some of my colleagues in Stearns County, and with these different 13 types of businesses, we have to decide whether or not they're going to be conditional, interim, permitted, or prohibited. We can't zone any particular one of these type of licenses out of the county. We have to allow them somewhere. Where there's somewhat of an area of discretion is capping them. The number, the population of 12,500 has to allow for one. So if you, and my understanding of the rule is if you have 12,501, that means technically a second for that type of population. Where it's somewhat of a disadvantage are these small incorporated cities that are like 300 population, 400, by reading this to the, to the T, they have to allow one. They can regulate themselves, or these cities can delegate to the county. That's something that staff is going to have to determine where these other cities want to do, because it's just not the planning department with their ordinance. It's going to be a multi-department commitment, everything from the auditors to the treasurer, auditor, treasurer, registering these businesses, similar to what liquor establishments are, to the assessors and the assessments that will go along with this, to the sheriff's department for spot checks and license, you know, follow up on those. So it's going to be kind of a number of departments that are going to be involved with this. So, you did, going through the materials, is there any questions that the Planning Commission had?
Question is, if you got these people smoking in these nonpublic or private places, what happens to the people that are downwind from them? Is there a way that that can be regulated?
Only way is the public spaces, where they can prohibit that from public spaces.
I mean, if I'm living in a dwelling, say, two, three houses down, and I get downwind of that crap, I have no way of stopping that or having to say-
Similar to smoking. Yeah, I mean, whether or not that constitutes a health condition that's hazardous to other people that have an equal right to air quality. You know, I, I'm not a health expert, you know?
I think you're understanding, winds do variable and change too, but I mean-
Yeah. In the materials, the air quality is, is important for like the manufacture and processing too. In some of these businesses, there's recommendations for air standards when they're doing that, because that can be an effect of processing and some of the, you know, the retail is one thing, but the manufacturing is another. They, they're huge, the, when they're, the cultivation, you anticipate most of those would be like a greenhouse setting. And then you get into security, and you get into ventilation, and you get into water supply. They're, they're, it's a crop that's, requires a considerable amount of energy too. So between water and electric, depends on the size of the operation, but those are all concerns that come into the grower or the cultivator segment.
I'll stand up, Wendy, if you're Louis, and intercept marijuana smoke, okay?
You can have all you want.
Any other questions? I have one, but anybody else? You, maybe I heard you wrong, a minimum distance between the commercial businesses of cannabis, why would you have that?
The only thing I could think of is overly saturated, green, some area. Like if we're only going to allow them in a certain district, is it, is it a good planning practice to allow multiple businesses all door to door to each other? I don't know, or do you want them spread out more?
12,500, 13 different ones. But we don't limit hardware stores that set up right next to each other, or other businesses. So I don't know if I-
We have nothing, yeah, we have nothing in our zoning code to that nature, that, that-
They want to be a competitive business. Why would we make them be 500 feet away?
Yeah, good point.
So, just something, but any other questions? Thank you.
Any thoughts?
Yeah, feel free to discuss.
Otherwise, I'm going to move on to the next agenda item.
Which is a comprehensive plan update.
Got a presentation, this is a short presentation, run through some slides. I think a few of you might have been here the last time we did a comprehensive plan. Mike was, I think, the chairman of our steering committee at that time. So it's been 10 years, and we're ready for another update. So, I guess the purpose of this tonight is just to introduce it to you. We'll let you know that this is on the horizon, it's going to be coming forward over the next year, year and a half. It takes time to consider a comprehensive plan and ultimately adopt one. And so, wanted to let you know what the process is. Tony will be putting out an RFP for consultants in October. And we'll get into some of the timeline for the, for the project and responsibilities. But I'll just run through some slides here, kind of high-level overview of what comprehensive plan is and what you can expect through the process. I'll turn this on first, and then I can advance the slides. Okay, there it is. So what is a comprehensive plan? It is a vision for the future, a decision-making guide, a basis for policy, a basis for the zoning ordinance. It's flexible and adaptive. It is not a zoning ordinance, it's not a regulatory document in that, in that sense. It's, it's not rigid and unchanging policy, so it should be, again, flexible and adaptive. A zoning ordinance, on the other hand, is rigid, it's, it's regulatory, it's a set of standards that must be met and formal process for approvals and denials of certain permits. It's, it's not specific in scope, it's, again, broad in general. And it's not the only planning tool- And it's not the only planning tool that the county would use. There's also CIPs, capital improvement policies. There's strategic plans. There's master plans. There's different types of policies in different areas that the county uses for decision-making. Plan organization in general is, starts with a vision, a set of goals, an existing conditions analysis. And then get into the different plan elements and policy areas within each of those elements. And then implementation tools and strategies for implementing the, the policies in the, in, in the document. Planning is, a zoning ordinance in sync with a cop plan is a more defendable ordinance than one that is not based on an approved comprehensive plan. So there is extensive case law out there supporting that. As a good reason, good practice for comprehensive planning. There's also state statutes that allow counties to plan and, and connect the zoning ordinance and land use issues, which is directly connected to what you all do, to the comprehensive plan. It also states that, that review and update should be done every 10 years. And so we're, we're up against that 10 years now, and so that's why we're here and looking at this. A plan also provides an opportunity for citizen participation in guiding the future of, of the community. It's an opportunity to integrate new data. Over 10 years, more new data comes out and needs to be included. Such as like the housing study and demographic information. It's an opportunity to identify issues and stay ahead of trends. In other words, accommodate change. Maybe 10 years ago, frac sand was a big issue. Maybe nowadays it's not so much of an issue. So it's maybe not something that's as, as important to have in your comprehensive plan. You don't maybe find as much emphasis to it. And so there's lots of issues like that, that, that change over time that you want to be able to accommodate. It allows you to address issues like in the county here, related to conservation of agricultural land and natural resources. And sometimes find a balance between competing, competing interests. And then it's also an opportunity to protect property rights and values. Planning history in Winona County, first comprehensive plan was adopted and developed and, and actually it wasn't adopted. It was, the, the process was in the late 60s and it was finalized in 1970, but it was actually never adopted. We went a number of years with a comprehensive plan that hadn't actually been adopted until 1985. In 1985, we adopted a comprehensive plan, again in 2001 and then in 2013. And here we are in 2025, probably, well, 2024, looking at adoption probably in 2025 or 26.
Louis.
Sorry. Oops. You have a question, Louis?
We were in this comprehensive plan that we look for economic development within the county, or is that the comprehensive plan?
That's, that would be an element in the comprehensive plan. It's in there right now. That's an element within the, the plan. This is what I'd be proposing. This is preliminary elements for the comprehensive plan update. Starts with land use, agriculture, natural and cultural resources, source water, wellhead protection, housing, transportation, perks and recreation, economic development, community facilities, intergovernmental cooperation and implementation. These are pretty standard elements within a comprehensive plan. They closely follow what the state of Wisconsin uses for their statewide comprehensive planning law. They closely follow what we currently have in our 2013 plan and what a lot of other communities would have in theirs as well. It is a little bit different in our current one, land use. There's essentially like four elements that make up what would be a land use element. What I would be proposing is to throw those in together under the land use element. Just because it makes it more clear as to how they fit, what the connection is to the zoning ordinance. And, and what, how they should be looked at broadly within the comprehensive plan. But that's preliminary plan elements that we'd be looking at. If you look at the current comprehensive plan, it's on the website and I'd encourage you to go look at it. Just, it's probably been a while since you've actually looked in the document and, you know, went through the whole thing and, and looked at it. But it would give you a good idea of, of some of the, of how a comprehensive plan is laid out. It has process in there with the process that they went through at that time. And, and then the different elements and implementation for those elements. Keep turning off my clicker here. Preliminary timeline for the process. Meetings in September before you guys, just to let you know the, what we're doing. Also be before the county board to, to present something similar to them, let them know what the, the process is. October through November, we'd be finalizing and posting the, the RFP in October. Plan on having it open for 45 days and then accepting proposals, reviewing those proposals in November and December. And have something to the county board in January to get a consultant on board. And then kickoff for the, the plan in February, March. I'd be assuming the process would be, would be taking about a year to, to complete. With public engagement and putting together a steering committee, looking through all the different plan elements, drafting a plan, reviewing it, getting it before you, and then to the county board. Your role within the process, really, it's, I mean, we'll be checking in with you and keeping you abreast along the way. I plan on coming and, and being before you again to talk about it in the future. But really, it's to get that feedback from you as we go along, but also at the end, you have, you're critical because you have to hold a public hearing. Similar to an ordinance adoption, for this, you'd have to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the county board for adoption. And I want to make sure that at that point, I hope that we have support from everybody at, at that time. And, you know, we're not in a position where we're having to backtrack. So, you know, keeping you in, in the loop. A steering committee would be put together and there'd be opportunity for probably, if people have time from this, from the planning commission to sit on that as well. So we're still kind of panning out what that process will be for, for establishing the, the steering committee. But I guess with that, do you have any, do you have any questions, comments? Jordan?
Just explain the steering committee to me a little bit.
Well, steering committee is going to be the primary, it's a public, it's a, should be a diverse group of people from across the county. Come together to steer the planning process. So they're involved every step along the way to provide feedback and make sure we're on the right track, that we're meeting the needs of the citizens of the county. Usually it's like a monthly meeting, so it's, it's, there's a commitment, similar to what you guys have with the planning commission. I mean, Mike can talk a little bit about it as the chairman of, of the steering committee last time and talk about how that planning process went. But yeah, it is a commitment. Over the course of a year, you're, you're, you're reviewing, you're guiding the process. You're also some of our, the, our biggest advocates for the, for the plan. Because you, you have, you're taking ownership for that. Comprehensive plan should be a grassroots, citizen-led process. And so the steering committee is kind of the, the points of that grassroots, community-led sphere. We also go out and we'll be doing a lot of public engagement. And so that's where we're, we're, we're reaching a broader segment of, of the population. But ultimately, that information comes back to the steering committee and, and it's processed and, and put into guiding the, the plan and how it's developed.
I think the last time we met, at least 12, 12 times.
You met 12 times? I would, yeah, there was a lot of meetings.
Further than we had hoped. When we formulated, we were hoping on 15 on a committee. Because you get too big, it's really hard to, to work it. And I believe I ended up counting myself 23, as they kept adding.
I think I remember you complaining.
Well, when you're trying to facilitate conversation and you're trying to focus 22 other people, it makes it hard to have an hour and a half, even a two-hour meeting and be productive. And refereeing as a moderator, you know, I, I have to get my list together. And there's always five or six that stepped to the plate on everything and want to kind of dominate. So I'd make a note of who was participating and who wasn't. And then somewhere in there, I would call on people that hadn't contributed at all. Maybe didn't want to, but maybe they were intimidated. And then after they had their time, then they would say what they thought, because it is a consensus. And you try to get a consensus with your steering committee. And then after you get it formulated, you're going to have a public hearing on that. You know, and that might be more than one time as well. It's a lot of material. What was it? It's 200 and some pages, if I remember right, comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I don't.
There's a lot of.
I don't pay attention to the numbers of pages, but yeah, it's a, it's a significant document and it's got a lot of data to back it up that goes into it.
But as Lou pointed out, every 10 years, we're evolving and changing. So the things that we talked about in 2012, for example. Somebody mentioned frac sand. Well, it was a big issue back then. No, it's not. But there's other things that we have to adjust. And quite frankly, we didn't talk hardly anything about green energy like solar windmills. So that had to be kind of added. And as you pointed out earlier, this is an ever-changing flexible plan. You know, as we find parts of it just aren't working out, the county board has the ability to make changes. And they should, because there's just things that don't always work out. And in land use, you guys have been in a lot of meetings. We write a lot of conditional uses for housing. And we look at that prime ag land versus other things. And I've noticed a lot of boundaries all over the place to make it conform with our ordinance that to me isn't practical. It's my own opinion. That's what we have to do now. Maybe that's something to look at. And those are just, I'm only using it as an example to think about our ordinance.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that's a, a good point. Another place where you guys can be of use, you work with the ordinance. You see how you make findings for your decisions that are based on the comprehensive plan. And so if there are areas and connections that you're not, you're not satisfied with, with the comprehensive plan and how it's working, how it's connected to the ordinance, you know, let us know. We'll make note of them and, you know, consider them through the, the comp plan process. I would imagine that as we go, I'd do an update with the planning commission every so often and let you know what the, what we've been working on, what the, kind of the high points are and allow you opportunity to provide feedback at that time, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, Lou, or anything? With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. I didn't hear anybody, so it's all in favor.